Welcome to our Weather Forecast Competition Special Session here at ITRIPLE E-Big Data. My name is Michael Kopp, now be your session host for the first session. Machine learning competitions are a vital part of machine learning research because they yield tangible benchmarks and allow competing ideas to be tested. Personally, I'm always positively surprised by the creativity and ingenuity of solutions that competitors submit. Of course, any competition is only ever as good as its competitors, and I hereby like to thank all our competition participants. We gain wonderful solutions and insights, and we would like to share these with the wider academic community over the next few hours. Without further ado, I will come to our first speaker. I have the difficult task to introduce our keynote speaker, Nal Kaltschbener. As he really needs no introduction, but I'll try to give it a go anyway. Nal is currently a deep learning scientist and co-founder of Google Brain's Research Unit in Amsterdam. My bias personal highlights of Nal's work comprise being part of the AlphaGo team, and co-three such papers as WaveNet, PixelRNN, and CNN, and GridLSDM. Recently, Nal was the senior author of MEGNET, a new weather model for precipitation forecasting, something we all learned a thing or two about over the last few months. I cannot wait for today's talk bearing the title "Insights on End-to-End Weather Forecasting", and hence I hereby yield the floor to you now.
Thank you, Michael. Thanks a lot for this wonderful introduction, and thanks a lot for inviting me, and I'm looking forward to also seeing all the great contributions that the participants have made to this challenge. So this is great. Today's talk will be about, its title "Insights on End-to-End Weather Forecasting", it is an attempt to summarize both the architectural results that we have from the from the two main papers that we've written on weather modeling, MEGNET and MEGNET2, these two papers, but it's also a way to sort of bring some of the slightly unwritten things that we learned through while doing this research about how we conceptualize weather forecasting and contribute to this ongoing debate of how we can conceptualize and evaluate weather models. I would like to give a shout out to all my co-authors, Lasse Schreier, Casper Manos, Jonathan Karla, Zeng, Jason, and Aaron, as well as to the other people you can see here, they're named here, who have been great advisors and collaborators throughout these efforts. As a means of an introduction, as well as an introduction to some of the conceptual aspects of MEGNET and MEGNET2, and also of our approach to weather modeling, I would just want to briefly summarize in a snapshot what the current state of weather models look like, and especially what type of models we want to compare our own neural networks with. So the majority of weather prediction today happens by way of numerical weather prediction models. These are physics-based models that function by a number of steps, and we can, in almost toyish way, we can schematize a number of steps, also as a way to understand better what we do compared with it. So numerical prediction model, like all the weather modeling models, they have to start from observation stage, and they have to come to a forecast, and this forecast can be either probabilistic or deterministic, and we're going to talk more about what that means. And this duality between probabilistic forecast and deterministic forecast is actually quite important for ourselves today. But physics-based models have a few steps that play an important role in the modeling process. So observation happened through, the observation happened to satellites and ground-based radars, and weather stations, and all these sensors spread around the earth, really, also in the oceans and the atmosphere, of course, all they measure various types of things about the atmosphere, whether it is, of course, temperature, precipitation rate, or humidity, or pressure, and so on. However, many of these measurements are noisy, and many of these measurements are incomplete and sparse. For example, if you think about weather stations, they're not, they're sparsely located around the globe. So the first process in a numerical weather prediction model usually is what is called a simulation, which is a way to process and densify the representation of the atmosphere, and also make it consistent with physics modeling priors that might be coming from a previous forecast. This simulation process takes in the order of some minutes, and then you have the very important physics simulation process, which is the process by which physics, there's thermodynamics and other physical equations are applied to the cell the atmosphere to actually make a prediction. This is often the most computationally intensive process of NWP models. And this takes roughly, as far as I could tell, in the order of half an hour to an hour, sometimes a bit longer depending on the model. This kind of physical computation also runs on supercomputers, and produces a whole number of rollouts, a number of deterministic usual instantiations of the future state of the atmosphere. And then these instantiations are then given to an assembling model or assembling procedure, which is a way to average them, or to actually get a better estimate of the actual predictions that we care about. And this assembling, and this assembly process in the end yields usually a probabilistic prediction, if it's a probabilistic NWP model. So this rough toy description is sort of how the vast majority of weather prediction models and weather forecasts actually happen today. And my understanding is also that there's actually a human component as well in this. Sometimes human experts look at the rollouts and try to understand what is causing what, or what type of situations are giving rise to what type of forecast. Now, of course, we want to contrast it with our goal here, right? And which is, which is almost like, it's a way to produce, it's a way to have an alternative approach to the problem of weather modeling, but also a way to learn a lot about what ways you can improve the current state, the current models, the current physics-based models, and also, and just to learn, and just to get more perspective on the problem itself. But in the very basic spirit of deep learning and neural networks, there's always a strive, there has been a strive, of course, in the field, to have the simplest approach, you know, the simple model, a simple model with lots of parameters, and then, of course, to try to go all the way from the inputs to the outputs in as little steps, in as few steps as possible. And usually, if you can do it in one step, that has been proven to be generally good, partly because engineering behind it simplified, you have one, you have one big step instead of multiple steps, and then the propagation of the gradients and the error, and all these things that we know very well from the field, you know, improves every part of this, every part of the pipeline at once. So the conceptually, the goal of an end-to-end deep learning-based approach to air modeling is that of also simplifying engineering, simplifying the toolkit, and going from the inputs to the outputs at once. That is anyway the goal and the vision. Contrary to other fields, like, for example, computer vision or machine translation, or other aspects where a similar approach has been applied in the past, our baselines here, this physics-based baseline that we have to compare our predictions with, are, you know, especially engineered, especially well engineered, and so we have a very, very strong baselines that we have to match in some way or compare ourselves with. Now, there are, so, okay, so here's a toy, here's a toy gift, just to catch a bit of attention. Here's a toy gift of what an end-to-end model could be doing, right? And also, this is a toy description of what could be happening in the neural network, right? So you start from some representation of the earth, you have the various observations, and then these go through various layers of the neural network. And firstly, capture perhaps sort of like lower-level features, then as the context of the network also grows, they capture higher-level phenomena, and as it goes towards the latest layers of the neural network, in this toy prediction scheme, you could imagine multiple futures being kind of represented in distributed fashion in these layers, and then finally the prediction comes out of it. And this is to contrast with what is happening in physics-based models, where we have these discrete deterministic rollouts, all clearly visible and inspectable, and then averaged, and which are then usually averaged or post-processed. But the in the end-to-end approach, this all happens at once, and happens in distributed space, of course, is not quite as visible. So, just, there are some, so why to do the end-to-end approach? Besides the simpler engineering, potentially simpler engineering, there are other, then of course some latency reasons, and some efficiency reasons, to basics, to simplify, to try and go into technicalities, but physics-based models rely on a lot on supercomputer CPU-based supercomputer computation, which is not as parallelizable and hasn't been growing also as, let's say, as fast over the past decade, if you wish, or so. Whereas neural nets really rely on very sort of cheap and low-precision computation, like with all the hardware that we're used to, like TPUs and GPUs and all this special hardware. And so the parallelizable nature of the computation makes it also, makes it scale, makes it scale potentially better. So of course, if we had a full end-to-end approach, it would take a second to make predictions instead of an hour, it would take just one forward pass technically, if possible. And so the latency would be seconds, the spatial resolution would not be a big issue in the spatial resolution we would care about, the output would not be a big issue for the computation, computational efficiency, and neither would be a temporal frequency. So if you want predictions every minute, it's not a problem, because you just run the neural network many times. And it just takes a second per time, it's not, we don't have these constraints as physics-based models. So this is a really good reason to potentially work on approach like this. Another good reason is basically, there are actually many phenomena where I've been told the physics models are either not well understood, or they're not so well directionally encoded in these numerical air prediction models. Whereas if we have some type of data that comes from sensors that is measurable in some way, or it's annotated even, potentially even annotated by human annotation, then a model-like method is actually able to, or an end-to-end approach, I would say, is actually able to learn from it, and to end-to-end, and to predict it. So maybe things like, for which maybe physics-based models don't even make too much sense, like traffic, or air pollution, or you know, even things that go beyond just, they're just spatial, but go beyond the core weather variables, is something that would be easy to incorporate. Another powerful feature is the potential transfer learning, which we've seen so many times in computer vision and other domains. And in the case of an end-to-end approach, it could really learn from all these variables, including the slightly more physical ones, if we had them. Finally, there's one final motivation, which is perhaps not, maybe less strong, but you also, because you go really from input to outputs, maybe you don't have any necessary humans involved in the forecasting process, and engineering itself requires perhaps less human expertise or less human ingenuity, which means that we could potentially gain and expand faster, scale faster, and expand faster with different variables from where. I want to now, for the last conceptual point before we go into the method to itself, I kind of want to just state a few things about evaluation. Evaluations are very important and tricky metric, when, a tricky, tricky, tricky topic, I think, when it comes to weather forecasting. And the first thing to know is, what type, like, it's to understand what type of variables or events we actually want to model. And so we can model simple things like precipitation rate, temperature, wind speed, all these very simple variables, which you can actually directly measure, for the most part, in a sparse and noisy way from using sensors. And then we also have, but there are actually emerging events, like, you know, what type of storm is that, that all those tornadoes causing high wind speed? Speaking of the recent situation that was in the US, or, you know, what kind of hurricane is it, and so on. And these type of events is not something we can usually directly measure, but it's something maybe will require some notation, other ways to, other ways to do this. But they also qualify as variables, or at least they can be understood as variables. And I say that because if we had annotation for them, or with annotation for them, then we could also model them directly. And in an end-to-end approach, these emerging events would also be modeled directly ideally, and would not necessarily be inspected by an expert human during, by looking at those rollouts, but more like as an outcome, as an output of the model itself. And speaking of variables, once we define the type of variables that we care about, there are also two different type of predictions and different type of evaluations. So here goes the probabilistic versus deterministic modeling and evaluations and metrics. And I'll give a better example later, but I want to just give this conceptualization basically. So when we predict something about weather, we may care about the probability of certain event happening, you know, the probability of rain, or a certain amount of rain, or a certain amount of winds, happening at a certain time and certain location. But we may, and that's a great prediction, it's a probabilistic prediction that gives some information. And then there's a deterministic prediction, which is what is the most likely amount of rain or winds to occur, or what is going to occur. And given such predictions, we have certain metrics that we can use, which are standard metrics for probabilistic predictions, especially in the weather space, but also, of course, machine learning, and for deterministic predictions. And one subtle point, which I'll come back to, come back to this later, is if you have a model that makes a probabilistic prediction, whether it's a physics-based model or an end-to-end model, how do you actually get to the deterministic prediction? And this process from probabilistic to deterministic, this shifting from probabilistic prediction to deterministic prediction, is actually, I think, understudied in a way, perhaps non-trivial. And we use one version, we use some tricks or methods to do this process, but it's actually an important process, which should not be, just, which can be studied further. Okay, so these are just a few points I want to make about this conceptualization of method, of the end-to-end approach, and its evaluation with respect to physics-based models and various metrics. Now, I'd like to make this a bit more concrete, and talk about actually our work with MEGNET2, and how far, how far all this vision we've been able to capture so far, and I would say it was a small piece, whether it's a gigantic, gigantic space of potential models and potential approaches. So method 2, MEGNET, and MEGNET 2 try to capture one aspect of this. And as I said before, in the end-to-end approach, our tendency is to make it as simple as possible. So we start from observations, which are different kinds, and we apply a deep neural network to it, and we get an output. Now, for MEGNET 2 currently, now, it turns out that these observations are actually a tricky, tricky data problem itself, and everybody who's working on this is aware of that. Just gaining observations of all the atmosphere, of all the many variables like humidity and pressure and so on, it's actually quite an engineering challenge. So we can get some radars, and we get some satellites, but then this just described the precipitation rates, or the different optical bands for the satellites taking pictures of the earth. But, you know, things like humidity and so on, they don't show up, but to make good predictions, even just for precipitation, which is the current focus still of MEGNET 2, to make these predictions well, you still need to know about pressure levels, which then determine, or wind speed, wind direction, and to make predictions up to 12,000 in the future, which is what MEGNET 2 does, you really need to know these things. So in order to have this information, we, in our inputs to our neural network, we use the initial state of a physics-based model, HER, which is a general physics model for CONUS, for the United States, and also makes predictions for all the core variables, weather. And this initial state improves the performance of the deep neural network, for sure, and also, but most importantly, and most obviously, gives a much richer representation of the atmosphere. From a pure end-to-end approach, this is something that, first of all, incur some latency, incur some delays, because a simulation process discussed takes some time, not as long as the simulation process, but still takes some time. And secondly, it doesn't get, it doesn't leave the approach quite as simple as it would like, but it's a step towards it, so. Now, I want to just give a brief indication of how our targets look like, the stuff that we're predicting. This is a 12-hour slideshow of rates of precipitation obtained from ground-based radar reflectivity, so the reflectivity of the radar signal, and from which then the precipitation rate is estimated. By the way, here, we don't make a distinction between snow and rain and hail, which would be very important distinctions to make. And, but MEGNET 2 currently doesn't have the capabilities of predicting the type of precipitation. It only predicts the amount of precipitation, well, if it's a few millimeters or more millimeters. And so our targets that we train on look like this, and look like what you're seeing here. And these are over 12, these are two, they come in two-minute intervals, like we use for MEGNET 2, and they are over a 12-hour time span. And another way, just to give a sense of, well, first of all, the region we're predicting, we're predicting CONUS, which is actually a subset of what you're seeing here, because we have a context around our prediction, but roughly, roughly what you're seeing here. And to give a sense of the types of data that are applicable in these type of problems, they're different from, say, the usual data, you can see certainly natural language or computer vision, they're very different. They are in images, but often many areas of these images are not available, or they're too noisy. Just in the case of radar, for example, here you can see the many areas, the blue areas are sort of the areas of good, of decent radar coverage, and the non-highlighted areas are the ones that have lower quality of radar coverage. And this already starts pointing to a certain sparsity. So even in the case of ground-based radar and precipitation, we have already a whole bunch of regions which are not very well covered. And now imagine if you go to weather stations, which are just point measurements, or you go to ocean boys, well, it's basically a station of the ocean, or balloons, or airplanes, then those give only point measurements. And in a full end-to-end approach, you will have, someone's going to actually have to deal with all the type of data. But the radar is among the densest data, besides satellite, optical satellite, satellite images, and still it still has lots of areas of bad data or not at all. Just like, just like MEGNET 2, we, for, in order to provide a probabilistic prediction, so MEGNET 2 basically aims to give a probabilistic prediction, probabilistic distribution for the variable, in this case, the rate of precipitation. We, for learning reasons, for stability reasons, we find it convenient to discretize this actually in multiple buckets, so the rates of precipitation discretizing in different buckets. Now, it is possible, one could have a continuous distribution, like just a Gaussian or something, or a mixture of Gaussians, or something like that, and they'll work, they'll work probably quite well as well. But we find that softmax, which then allows us to use all kinds of, think about it in the usual way that we think about, say, computer vision or MLP, about word prediction or image classification, we just think that this is quite a useful trick to use for the prediction. In terms of inputs, MEGNET 2 is actually quite similar to the predecessor MEGNET, except for what I just mentioned, which is the core variables coming from the physics-based HER state. And in the paper, we provide a bunch of evaluation studies that show that this actually really helps. So of course, having a richer representation of the atmosphere does help, as far as I'm concerned. But other than that, we have the radar that I've shown you, the MRMAS radar, in the present, to bring the future. We have GoSatellite imagery, which are just satellite images of the earth in different optical bands. We also tell the model, you know, the location, the time, the hour, and all those important features, which obviously have an impact usually on performance. The satellite imagery actually has less input performance, we find. Another important problem for MEGNET 2 was to actually capture enough context. And now we're going into this, into the nitty-gritty details of the model. As we, you know, if we look at what happens in physics-based models, they actually combine, they collect and combine information from a very large area around the point of prediction, or from just around all the regional prediction, prediction, I would say. And so, and we can learn from that, and in a neural network approach, we also have to capture a large, large context area. It is, especially if we want to go to something like 12 hours of prediction. So 12 hours in the future is actually like a lot of things happen these 12 hours. So capture a lot of context is not, has to happen, it's not an option anymore. And we actually showed a narration study, so going up to 2,048 square kilometers, 4,048 square number of pixels in the input, is actually beneficial to our prediction model. Once we have such large inputs, from an efficiency point of view, and also from a memory point of view, when it comes to training these models, it's actually beneficial to distribute them across a number of chips, so that the context that is expansively embedded by the neural network can be used for a large target area, in this case of 512 square kilometers. And so we have this, basically, we have this context distributed across a number of machines. This was something that, for example, compared to our previous model MEGNET, we were not, we are doing newly now. Just a quick thought of architecture there, perhaps, we have, I would say, there's nothing like truly unusual from what is, from what is used in other parts of the deep learning field. And today, I would say that most of these components, of course, are very well-known. We, I just described the large amount of context, so one feature architecture is to capture this context, and using things like self-attention has proved to be a bit too expensive for now, although there might be tricks to get around it. So what we do, in the case of MEGNET 2, is actually to use large factors of dilation, up to 128 actually, which means that in that image that I showed you, our convolutions go all the way across and to the border of the neighboring patch in order to capture information. Another important point is this lead-time embedding, which for MEGNET 1 was also an important component of an efficient solution. But we actually improved it, and we have various type of MLP embedding, MLP that actually post-processes this internal embedding and improves the accuracy. So there are a few features of this, which have been fine-tuned, which are important to a good performance, but most components are known. So this is architecture. Now, it actually turns out, it took us a bit of time to understand fully what the best basins are for MEGNET 2. And I already summarized this portion in our introduction. But if you have MEGNET, which is a MEGNET 2, which is a probabilistic model, first of all, you want to compare it to probabilistic physics-based model. Now, there are also physics-based models which are not, which just produce a single rollout, like HER, for example, they produce mostly a single rollout, for the most part. But there are many that actually take rolls from different physics-based models and ensemble them, like I was describing in the first slide. So one such model is called HREF, and they produce a probabilistic prediction for precipitation, for example. So probabilistic baselines are very important for an end-to-end approach, which is itself probabilistic. Then after the threshold, after the thresholding point, then we can also evaluate deterministic quality of our forecast. So we take the probabilities, and we have to threshold it in some way to get the deterministic forecast. And then we can compare that as well with the thresholded probabilistic physics-based forecast or single rollouts, if we think that's convenient. And this thresholding, as I was saying, I think is rather non-trivial, and also it might actually depend on which variable one's model. Perhaps for precipitation, so actually, perhaps for other variables, taking the mode or the mean of the distribution might be a fine thing to do. But for precipitation, we actually find that thresholding based on the validation data is the most effective way to get the highest scores, a deterministic scores. Okay, so now, a section of the results. So probabilistic method compared to probabilistic NWP, in this case, HREF, which is one of the best models, one of the better models. We see that we have this score, a continuous rank probability score, which actually, so the load is better. And this is up to 12 hours, and in this case, on this test data, which have been asked, which have been tried to make as large as possible and to not have any overlaps, you can read it in the paper, overlaps of training data, we see that we actually do better all the way up to 12 hours, which is quite, quite great, it's a nice feature. CSI and F1 and balanced accuracy are deterministic scores. So once we threshold MEGNET 2, and we threshold HREF, then we can actually compute the CSI and F1 of these models. And here we can see how, for the most part, probabilistic deterministic evaluations are correlated. But here we actually see But here we actually see that, in this case, HREF, at the 10th hour in the future, actually does a little better than METNET 2. The blue line here is actually a single rollout, the single rollout of Hur, which is something that we do better up to 12 hours. Another thing I want, that we could also dwell in, but just to give a brief summary, is how much we improve over Method 1. Model improvements as well as data improvements lead to a better result, substantially better performance. And this is really key, because as we know, in the fine-tuning of neural networks will often end with the data and bigger models, will actually lead to better performance. And we've seen enormous improvements in other fields. So in an end-to-end approach, we'd hope that the usual deep learning engineer, the generic deep learning engineer could actually lead to better performance. We see this from Method 2, but hopefully we'll also see this in the future as well. There also, the paper and our work also includes many appliations. I won't talk about that so much. Suffice to say that this holds for low and high rates of precipitation, which are much rarer. So it learns from rare data and holds across multiple regions of the cosmos. I didn't have so much time to talk about this, but models like METNET 2 and end-to-end models, in the end, also support hybrid and post-processing modes. And often, there are good advantages for doing this. So basically, ways to combine the forecast of the NWP forecast with the new network itself. This often leads to improvements and so on, but I'm not going to talk in too much detail about this. Finally, let's look and compare some forecasts. These are probabilities of 2 millimeters of, 1 or 2 millimeters of precipitation rate, I don't remember exactly, over 12 hours. And we have the ground truth, METNET 2 and HREF. And we see how Method 2 being in a way the ensemble of all possible rollouts will give a very, very smooth distribution, whereas HREF has about 12 rollouts, 10 or 12 ensembles in it, and it's also quite smooth, but a bit less. This is another way to represent the same issue with the thresholds. This is to have the thresholds represented with the probability maps. It's a way to obtain this representation, not going to talk about this too much. Another case is this storm that where we also have a prediction for METNET 2 and HREF over 12 hours. Here's another one. This is also, I think it's a formation of some hurricane with different probabilities for 2 millimeters of rain. These are all probabilistic predictions, except for the threshold that I showed. And the final point that I want to make before my time is up is there are, there actually are, the one nice thing that we can do is actually apply all these interpretability tools that we have. They were developed for images for other models, to these weather models, and see what they've actually learned. And what is nice about that is that actually, they do give us some sense of the relationships, and they give us some peek into the distributed space that these neural networks learn and that they use to make a prediction. And one of the things that we actually, that we find is quite surprising is this connection between the pressure levels, basically, at the input state, so at time zero, and how they basically, how they affect every hour, our precipitation in the future. And there's actually something that I'm not so familiar with, but it's called quasi-giostrophic theory, which describes various equations of how pressure levels induce convection later in future hours. And they're used for, if I understand correctly, to model more efficiently these physics processes that happen in the atmosphere. And it seems that actually Method 2 picks up on this type of relationship in this interpretability results. Let us show that Method 2 seems to be picking up on this connection, which is quite interesting. This was, of course, pointed out by one of our advisors, meteorologists, who saw these results. So, in all, Method 2 tends to be a step towards this end-to-end vision. It's really the tip of the iceberg, because weather is so diverse and has so many variables, and we only, you know, temporally and spatially, we can really improve the extent going forward. And of course, there's so many other weather things to predict, and they might behave differently for precipitation. They may have slightly different features. They might be harder, or they might be easier to predict in precipitation in terms of performance with respect to the other models. And it's something that we have yet to discover. From a machine learning perspective, there are many challenges. Things like, you know, how to improve thresholding to go from probabilistic to deterministic, how to learn from even sparse sources of data, or really really sparse ones like airplanes and so on. All these things will be coming to play as we get into the, to a much broader set of forecasting variables. Thanks a lot. This was then my talk.
Fantastic. Well, thank you very much now for fantastic talk. We already have some questions. The first one comes from Daniel Springer. Many thanks for this talk. My understanding is that the architecture of METNET is based on axial attention. Given that the attention formalism is quite powerful, is there a particular reason why METNET 2 does not, or seems not, to rely on this specific version of attention?
Thanks a lot for this question. The main reason is the target patch size. In METNET, we had a patch size of 64 by 64. So running horizontal and vertical axial attention was actually quite efficient, and it was working really well for us. When we scaled to larger input context, we could not preserve an area of 64 by 64, because the, if you think about it, the cost of computing this whole context, which has to be big anyway, no matter how big your area is, your target area is, is actually quite high. So we had to increase the target patch area to 512 by 512, to a much larger patch area. And at that point, running simple axial attention actually was kind of too expensive. It was slowing us down. And so, and so again, we started using convolutions again there. And then we said, okay, how to increase the receptive field, at least at the level of the target patch for the convolutions? And then we started using dilation, and we added more dilation, and it seemed to always basically help up to some point. Then at one point, it more or less flattens out, it doesn't help, or it actually starts hurting. But in the end, it's the little convolutions where a fine approach. And we found then that small improvements in the residual blocks, small improvements in the lead time, in the lead time conditioning, those things actually were helping more than trying to make attention work. However, I believe that as we go more global, as the representation becomes more spherical, so if you want to bring it for two or three days, you might actually have to embed, let's say, half the globe or more. And as this presentation becomes more spherical, then elements like attention will be key again, because convolutions are less good at being sort of flexible as far as the input context goes. But that was the main reason, inefficiency reason, actually.
Very nice. Well, thank you very much for your answer. Questions are coming thick and fast. I'm not sure we can do all of them, but I'll go through it in sequence. The next one is from Uc Leonen. My question would be, what's your take on end-to-end weather forecasting and machine learning versus machine learning to improve subcomponents of existing weather models?
Great question. My take, my slightly, my take is a bit like the conversation between hybrid vehicles and electric vehicles. The simplicity of engineering might actually be a big advantage long-term. Of course, it's on the onus of the simplicity of engineering of electric vehicles opposed to hybrid one, maybe, might be an advantage for us in this respect. However, it's the onus of end-to-end weather models to show that we can do as well as physics-based models. And just like, so basically, a hybrid approach requires you to maintain potentially both a neural part and a physics-based part. And it could be, from an engineering perspective, rather costly in the end. So if you can do well with the neural part only, we are definitely, it's perhaps the easiest approach. However, in our METNET 2 paper, we showed that in the hybrid mode, where you take the best of the physics forecast and all our inputs, you actually get the best performance. So right now, the hybrid approach does give the best performance, and so it's cannot be ignored. But in the long term, maybe one would like to see a full end-to-end approach doing really well. And don't see this.
Very nice. Thanks very much. We maybe have time for two more, if that's okay with you now. Next question is from Christian Eisenberger. Many thanks for the great talk. You have inputs at different spatial and temporal resolutions, if I understand correctly. How do you deal with this in the architecture?
Yes, yeah, great question. We, we deal with it rather simply. We do, basically, we do, where we have to, we down-sample to, so we have 2,048 square kilometers, which is 2,048 square pixels at the input. But we actually down-sample that to 512 by 512. And where we have inputs which are actually not as big as a full context, we don't down-sample them. So right now, at the very input of Method 2, we just basically do the simplest possible down sampling, which preserves as much of the information, the context, as possible. But, and that so far has worked as well. I think there could be fancier things to do here, but simple down sampling a little bit helps us a lot. Another very important point in Method 2 is that although we down-sample the input, then we have to up-sample later in the architecture, which is a little bit like what UNIT does, if you wish. And we have only one step of that, half the architecture, we go back to the one-square-kilometer resolution, which is a native resolution, and we like to make the predictions for. So, but at the input, we basically down-sample to make sure that everything fits nicely.
Thank you very much. I'll do one more question. There are many more in there. We maybe can email them to you if you like now. I know that one of the speakers later has to leave pretty right after, so maybe we can't over too much. The next one is from, actually, the next speaker, Petra Heruza. And his question is, so he also liked your talk very much, and he said, I like the topic of the tricky metrics you mentioned. Any thoughts about how to integrate all insights that different thresholds with CSI GIF? For example, to have a single scaler summarizing the model, of course, precipitation distributions. Maybe this can also help the loss function. Any thoughts? Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great point. This actually, this actually goes to the point of how do we threshold these things properly? And having, if you care about CSI and F1, and you care about deterministic accuracy or deterministic performance, then having this thresholding based on validation data seems to work well for precipitation and in our context. However, having, as Pedro says, a single scaler for the whole, for every rate, seems to be, and every lead time actually seems to be limiting. So what we can imagine is doing thresholding per patch in some way, or, you know, various ways of learning how to threshold per patch. And this would, I think, would most likely improve the deterministic accuracy and the scores, the scores themselves, if you do some kind of patch-based thresholding, not just validation database, but validation plus patch or something like that. And I think it's an unsolved problem. There are some intuitions that one can use here. But I think to solve the full picture, I think this would actually be worth looking at. And at least for some variables, like a precipitation, could give us significant improvements on the deterministic side of the evaluation.
Fantastic. Well, thank you very, very much now for fantastic talk. There are many questions, so as I said, I'll try and email you, and many comments, all thanking you as well. So, great, great, and thank you very much for that.
Thanks a lot. Thank you for attention.
The next speaker we have is Petra Heruza. Petra is an IRE research fellow and the driving force behind our weather forecast competition. He joined IRE after being a successful competitor himself in our Traffic Forecast 2019 competition, where we also used simple geospatial gridding to predict then the complex phenomena that is traffic. Petra will present first insights on transfer learning abilities gleaned from this very competition. Petra, I yield the floor to you.
Thank you so much for attending today. And first of all, I want to thank everyone who contributed to make this possible. All people who participated from IMET and also people at KRI. So thank you so much. And well, so today we are going to talk about the weather forecast competition. This is what we are going to see today. We first are going to describe the dataset, and then we are going to go through the benchmark and competition definition. And then we briefly, we will briefly discuss the highlights from the competition. We thought much more details, since the participants will explain themselves in depth their methodologies. And afterwards, we will conclude with the future work. So, first of all, the Weather Forecast Data Set is created to easily allow machine learning models to predict the weather. And in particular, weather forecast represents multiple variables, like rain rate or temperature, with a high resolution of four square meters per pixel, and they are updated every 15 minutes. Training data that we provide is for one year. And regions represent a diverse landscape, as you can see in the picture. They include things like mountains, deserts, ice lands, seas, and many others. So, in order to build the dataset, we first receive the data from the ElmetSat NowcastingSat. And then we perform the following steps. We first of all create a crop of 11 regions of 256 times 256 pixels. And then we delete few variables that come with this data. Those variables allows us to reduce the dataset up to a 33%, and they are just related to colors to plot the images, so they are not necessary for machine learning models. Then, we create a list of all missing timing intervals, and that's because this data comes from satellites, and there's many, many missing time slots. So we created that list, and then it's up to the participants to decide if they want to fill those slots or if they want just to avoid those in the sequences for training. Then, we create a variable called temperature, which combines both the temperature at ground and on cloud stop. This reduces the number of missing values, as you can see in the images, from left to right where it is combined. And finally, we create the data split for training, validation, and test in our measurement. So, a day of any variable is represented by a grayscale movie with 96 frames each representing 15 minutes. And we show here one-day evolution for different variables. In the first row, we show the day of a cloud pressure product. And in the right side, the probability of topmost falling, which is somehow related to turbulences. And in the second row, we show a mask for cloud and cloud three pixels. And in the right side, we show the convective rainfall rate. So, as you can see, well, from the numeric binary, different variables have different types. So for example, turbulence is actually a probability. Cloud mass is binary, and precipitation is a scalar representing the rate. So here, another example, we show the distribution of the four target variables. And as you can see, they are all different. And in particular, precipitation, the second one is zero inflated. So, weather forecast is just composed of heterogeneous data, which contain highly structured correlations. And that actually makes the task interesting for machine learning itself, besides contributing weather forecasting. So, we also provided complementary variables. And in total, there are 25 with spatial and temporal resolutions. Those are divided in five big groups that you can see in rows in this table. And the third column is the list of all variables. And the fourth column is the list of the target variables. We also include study features like latitude, longitude, or elevation, which is the case of the shown image here. And it is, again, up to the participants if they want to use or not use these variables. So, a little bit of the state of the art, and this, of course, is going to include the works that Nadja explained. So recently, deep learning models show that they can outperform physical numerical models in short-temperature precipitation. So first of all, in 2019, Avramov et al. showed that a unit architecture could capture rain patterns and predict up to 60 minutes. And just after only a few months, Sanderby et al. showed that they can predict the same variable up to eight hours using spatial-temporal encoders with axial attention. And yes, this is actually a METNET 1. And this year, in September 2021, just three months ago, Mohamed et al. published a paper at Nature, where they not only show that generative models can predict precipitation over the United Kingdom, but showed also that meteorologists prefer those predictions compared to the ones generated by the state compared to the ones generated by the state-of-the-art physics-based models that are being used nowadays operationally. And last one on the list, this is, this is metnet two. As behold, et al. showed that recurrent convolutional networks with residual works can outperform operational models up to 12 hours. So, we, we can see a trend here in predictive precipitation with deep learning, and even better than operational models up to 12 hours. And it is also true, to my knowledge, that the data sets are not freely available, all of them, just a small subset for Mohamed et al. So, what this competition, and what we wanted in this competition is to provide a benchmark with accessible data that also goes beyond predicting precipitation. So, increasing the complexity of the task, we created the weather forecast competition where we give participants one hour of multiple variables, 25 plus the three static variables that I mentioned before. And they, they need to provide predictions up to eight hours into the future for four of those variables. So, this, this we think allows researcher to compare the results on a common benchmark for high-resolution multi-channel weather predictions. And since meteorological models capture the physics of weather, and these laws are general and apply everywhere on Earth, we believe that deep learning models that learn a good representation should be also exposed to different locations around Earth. And it's for that reason that we created also the Spatial Transfer Learning Challenge, where participants are not provided with training data, but they are required to make predictions in, in six unseen regions. And those are the ones that you can see on screen right now in orange. So, 24 hours of data are provided for days in the split of training and validation between the range of February 2019 and 2020. Also, only one hour is provided for the test days in the same period. And additionally, we, we, we also ask participants in the next year of the training data, where no training data is given, setting also a benchmark for temporal transfer learning. So altogether, we set these four different benchmarks that evaluate models in their training regime, plus their robustness under temporal and spatial transfer learning scenarios. So, participants could test their models for challenges one and two in the first column during the competition phase. This competition was from July 1st to October 28th. However, the final score was obtained within the final phase, which is the last column, where they only had access to the input data for one week, and could upload a maximum of three predictions without the possibility of removing them from the leaderboard. So that means that, that the final scores are all in temporal transfer learning benchmark with two tasks. One, in the core regions, and the second one on the spatial transfer learning regions. The challenges are evaluated by comparing the predictions of the participants with the ground truth. And we basically use mean square error adapted, adapted to real, to problems of real life that we faced, like the missing values and also the different error contributions across the four target variables. The competition was split into two incremental stages. The stage one of the competition was running from April 1st and June 30. And the core task was predicted in three training regions, and the spatial transfer learning had three unseen, and new unseen regions. And the results of these stages were presented at the first workshop on complex data challenges in Earth observations. And we have videos with the presentations and the respective papers. You can see more details in the link that we provide here. And now, this is the second stage of the competition. It was running from July 1st to November 3rd. And the core task this time had five instead of three training regions. And this spatial transfer learning had six instead of three. So that means that we roughly doubled the size in this stage. So this is the data that we are presenting today, and the program can be accessed at the link provided in the ITB data cap right down here. So, let us start with the highlights of different models for the leaderboard and what strategies they used. So teams here are named in the first column, and they are sorted according to the leaderboard ranks. The last row is just the provided unit baseline. The table compares, first of all, the input data that were used by each model in the second and third row and columns, if the models predicted target variables together or separated, how different regions are fed into the models in the fifth column, and whether any data augmentation was applied, or how all feature frames are computed in the last column. So, what we can say is that a good performance don't actually require extra variables, as the best model does not use them. Also, substantial benefits can be seen from training a single model covering all locations. We can also say that the two top submissions train separate models for some or all target variables. And all models, but the baseline predict all future times in one goal. The baseline just makes each inference conditionate to the, the lead time to predict. So now, let's talk about our performance. Models are shown again in rows, and the second block of rows after the double horizontal line are the provided baselines. Now, the second column and the third show the error of the models on the training regions and their reductions with respect to, to units trained per region. Now, the fourth column shows the error on the spatial transfer learning regions. And the following column show the error reduction with respect to using a single unit or an ensemble based on the individual units used in the core challenge in the last column. So, we can see that actually in, in core challenge, the best, the best model reduces the, the error of the persistent model up to 53% and 33.3% with respect to the units trained per region. And transfer, we can see that this, this model reduces to a 6.6 with respect to the ensembles. And there's an interesting fact here, which is that the ranks of the core challenge and the transfer learning challenge are completely aligned one-to-one. So the smarter, the smarter the model in the training regions, the better the performance in the new unseen regions. And that's also one more fact, which is highlighted here in, in yellow. And you can, you can derive this fact by, by dividing walk solution, well, score by Sungbin Choi in the last row. And you can see that the improvement from the second to the third model is 1% in the core, but 5% in the transfer, which means that the top two models, they generalize much better into unknown, uh, unknown regions. So, as, as a summary, the results of, of what, the results show that deep learning models are actually useful in predicting multiple weather variables. They reduce the error by over 50% with respect to baseline and 30% with respect to unit. And while this I didn't say, but you will see in the following talks, but different approaches were, were used. Mainly an over residual block for convolutional gated recurring units by the winner, a variation autoencoder in the bottleneck of a unit, a vision transformer, and generally, they, they all use more than ensembles. So, both insights from the stage one and the stage two competition can be found in these two papers. So please have a look into them for more details, or, or just contact us. We are happy to discuss. So now towards 2022, we want to, we want to further discuss when and why models succeed or fail predicting relevant weather events, like for instance, heavy precipitation, or what metrics can capture the modest performance across the data distribution. Also, we, we are planning to extend the competition, and the goal will be to predict ground-based precipitation observations from opera radars using only raw meta-sat second generation radiance. So, to conclude, let me explain what weather forecast is in a nutshell. Weather forecast, we believe it's an ideal benchmark for machine learning models for video frame predictions that encode weather variables. It has a live leaderboard, which allows researchers to submit predictions and compare their models to the state-of-the-art through real comparisons without the danger of overfitting, because we don't release the, the ground truth. And weather forecast is also ideal for spatial and temporal transfer learning benchmarks, thanks to how it is designed, and it is ideal to benchmark the robustness of the models. It is actively incorporating new data and challenges, as I said. And we provide, we provide the code for data loaders in PyTorch and baseline models. And also, the models of the participants can be, can be accessed now on GitHub. So, thank you for your attention. We hope you find the, the challenge exciting. And remember that you can find the data in our website and code and base lives in our GitHub, and where you can see also the solutions of the winners. So, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Pedro, and thanks, thanks for all your work. May, maybe one thing, I mean, we, we talked a bit about the next year's potential competition. Maybe this also forum where maybe after the talks, we can gather, you know, your thoughts on what would actually be sensible, where the biggest challenges are, you see. And I think that could also be valuable feedback. So I think, Pedro, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not completely cast in stone, what we do?
Yeah, yeah. It would be definitely great to discuss this with, with the people that we have today in the talk. Definitely.
Fantastic. So, thank you. So, we come what, to what I would call the business end. We come to the presentation of our, our winners. And as Pedro has nicely shown the, the breakdown, so what is interesting is that the core and transfer challenge were all in the same order, the winners. And we start with our first prize winner, Yu Se Linon. And he will give a talk on improvements to short-term weather prediction with recurrent convolutional networks. Yu Se, I know you have to leave soon, so I'll leave, yield the floor to you ASAP.
Thanks. So, I will talk about the improvements to the, to the model I was using in the previous stage to the competition. But since I know that there are probably some people in the audience who, who haven't seen that, let me give a, a little bit of a summary of, of what I'm doing here. So, first, just a bit, a little bit on my motivation to join the competition. So, in my day-to-day job, I'm working at Meteosuisse, the Swiss National Meteorological Service. And I'm on a fellowship to develop thunderstorm nowcasting using machine learning and AI. And so, we entered this competition with the motivation that, you know, that the model, models that we developed for this competition would also help us in the, in the main project. And this way, we can test our models with a kind of controlled and and, and kind of well, well-defined data set. So this is kind of what we're trying to do, do in the context of thunderstorm nowcasting. So one example here is predicting, a model predicting whether there's going to be lightning occurring within 10 kilometers of each pixel at a, at a given time step. This is also part of the summary of what I did last time. But, so I was basically using this multiscale recurrent convolutional network. So, architecture very similar to a couple of studies from, from the recent years, where basically we're taking a time series of, of these input frames. And then we're processing each frame with these down sampling stages, which are here marked with the red down arrows. And these are all using shared weights. And then, on each stage of the down sampling, we are also doing this recurrent processing using convolutional gated recurrent units, which are, are similar to the convolutional LSTMs that were discussed in the previous talk. We're processing this, this further down to a lower resolution and a higher number of channels. And then, so this encoder part of the network produces an analysis, and then it's passed on to the, to the forecaster part, which has a task of taking this hidden representation that the encoder has created, and then producing the, the output from it. And one important point is that we have these connections between the encoder and forecaster at multiple levels of resolution, in a kind of a unit style setup. And this allows us to pass through the higher resolutions so that we get, we get sort of predictions on the, on the initial time steps where there is less uncertainty. One interesting point I would like to mention, since in the last workshop, there were some of the other competitors were saying, or really emphasizing how important it was for them to control overfitting. I instead found that this model is actually very naturally resilient against overfitting, and I didn't need to use any normalization or dropout in this network. I used, as Pedro mentioned, one model per, per target variable, so one for rain rate, one for temperature, and so on. Another thing to note about this network is that it's pretty GPU memory hungry. So, you need to either run it at a small batch size or to have multiple GPUs, which I fortunately had access to. And then just a couple of words on the training. So, we are reducing the learning rate based on what the, what the validation set metric is doing. And we are saving the weights that, that gave the best validation metric during the training. And that's basically the, the early stopping strategy. So, this model won the first stage competition, so I didn't see much need to make radical changes. So I used the same model architecture and training procedure, but with some improvements. So, first of all, we had more training data from the competition. Then I had a different model variant, a different optimizer. And then I did some analysis of the, of the rain rate field to improve that. And then I also used model ends ensembling to improve the results. So first of all, I am found that this model actually works just fine if you just delete the deepest layer of the model. You get very similar performance, but the number of free parameters is reduced from about 19 million to a little less than 5 million. So that would hopefully also improve the generalizability of the model and make it less prone to overfitting. Unfortunately, the competition requirements are reduced only slightly, because most of the computing is happening, happening here in the high resolution part. So it still requires almost as much GPU power and memory. Then another thing I did was take into use the Ada believes optimizer, which is a bit of a modification of the Adam algorithm. And I found it robust, and it seems to converge fast, and seems to give a little bit better results than Adam. Nothing really that was decisive in this competition, but a nice addition. And overall, I think, you know, to me, of all the optimizers that have come out after Adam, I think this is one of the most promising ones, because it's, it's, it's really a robust optimizer. Then, one thing I found, kind of already during the first stage of the competition, but I then didn't do anything about it, was that the statistics in the training data set are different from the statistics of the validation set for the rain rate. Was that the statistics in the training dataset are different from the statistics of the validation set for the rain rate. So the average rain rate, for example, is 20% higher in the validation set. The differences for other variables were much, much smaller, so I didn't bother to do anything like this for those. But the way I tried to mitigate is this is to use kind of a split conditional model. So, for each training sample, I detect the maximum rain rate in the input. And then I kind of split it in two. So if it's under the median, I use one model. And if it's over the median, I use another model. And then these two models are kind of embedded into one. And this way, both models will be trained with an approximately equal number of samples. But since the rain rate is higher in the validation set, the high rain rate model will actually be used a little bit more there. And so, this should hopefully help resolve the imbalance. Although I'm not really sure how this imbalance extends into the test set or the held out set. And then finally, I tried to improve the results using a model ensembling. So, taking multiple models and then averaging the results. I played around a little bit with different weighting strategies. So, should we take equal weights or do we try to optimize that with kind of a least squares regret progression or ridge regression? Those are kind of nice in this competition because we are using mean square error. And it's possible to derive like nice analytical results for optimizing the weights for mean square error. So ensembling, of course, it's quite expensive in terms of computational time. But I figured, well, since I was doing some hyperparameter tuning anyway. And kind of trying different architectures like this shallow model versus the deeper model. If I was going to do that anyway, then I kind of got the ensemble members for free. So I might as well do the ensembling itself. So with the conditional rain rate and the ensembling, the final competition model that I passed. You know, into the final stages of the. Of the competition was really, in the end, very complex, this kind of Russian press and doll of models. Where we had as much as five ensemble members for temperature. This was because I used a temperature variable kind of to do the hyperparameter tuning. And then just use that setup for the other variables. Then we have two ensemble members for rain rate, each of which have these high rain rate, low rain rate branches. And then we have. Two ensemble members for the tropopause folding and the cloud mask each. And then we kind of mash all of this together. So just to look at the impact of these improvements. So here in this table, which is pulled from the from the paper, the first line is showing the. Results I got for this dataset. But just using the stage one model, which had not been retrained at all with the new data. So, if we just look at the temperature. We got scores like this. And then, just adding the new training data. Improved the improved the scores by something like 4%, 4%, I think this is. And then. Looking at these runs here, which used the Ada Believe Optimizer, they are consistently getting a little bit better results than the one with the Adam optimizer. Here, if we look at the rain intensity. We're also getting some improvements on going from the. Basic models to the conditional model. And then finally, in the in the last row here, we get the results of the ensembling. So again, if we look at the temperature, we get from this 0.0043. 434 to about 428. So, is this a substantial improvement? That really depends on the use case. It's definitely a relatively expensive one. But in this kind of competition, that kind of advantage can be quite decisive. So I decided to include it. And as I mentioned, I had those ensemble members basically for free already. So that seemed worth it. So let's see, how much time do I have?
Well, nominally two minutes, but I think the gating item is that you need to leave.
I'm a little bit flexible on that.
Okay.
But I only have a couple of kind of examples of the predictions and then then I'll get to the summary. So.
Thank you.
Here's a prediction of the temperature field. In the case of the temperature, I just kind of filled in the. Missing data fields using the mean of that that temperature field. And what we see is the basic pattern that kind of shows up in all the variables. So that we have fairly sharp predictions in the initial frames. And then it gets much blurrier because things get more uncertain. But it's kind of interesting to also see. How, for example, this area here gets a little bit brighter. And so, so the higher temperatures and that actually kind of starts appearing here in the. You know, 32 frames later. Even though it's really hard to see any any effect like that here in the in the initial frames. So I don't even really know where the network is getting that tendency from. So then this is for the rain rate. This is kind of challenging even with the conditional network. It's getting very blurry, but it's doing something. The tropopause folding is kind of interesting because there are kind of these narrow bands. And the network seems to be able to do a decent job up to fairly highly times to predict kind of the movement. And then there's the cloud mask, again, similar story, it gets blurrier as we get forward in time. So, these are the conclusions. Again, no changes or no radical changes to the model approach. We see that these are really data-hungry models, so additional training data was was the biggest factor in improving the scores. Model ensembling can help, especially if you were already tuning hyperparameters, so you have some free models. The Ada Believe Optimizer seems very, very promising. And finally, this kind of conditional modeling can help if you have unbalanced distributions between the training and validation sets. And we'll keep on kind of using these improvements that we got in this competition and to use them in our main line of work at Meteosuisse. So, thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you very much indeed. You see, great, great solution and great insights. There's one question from Ivan Swoko, who asks, can you describe a bit your compute setups? So GPUs type memory, wall time essentially, but probably given that you had many elements, it's maybe harder to say. But could you give us a rough estimate?
So, I had access to some compute nodes at the CSCS, so the Swiss Supercomputing Center. Where I was able to run the model on a cluster with eight GPUs. I think it would be plausible to run this with just one, though. At one point, I tried to run this using just. Just four GPUs, I think, and the speed ups from going to eight are not that huge.
Understood. And the memory of your GPU card, could you say something about that? Does it need, you know, 80 gig A100s or? Will?
Well, that depends on the batch size. So I was.
Okay.
With this setup, I was able to use a pretty good, you know, pretty large batch size. But if you don't have the memory, you can just go to a smaller one.
But you're confident it still trains in the same to the same degree?
Haven't really tried it, but.
Okay. Yeah. Brilliant. Okay. Well, thank you very, very much. There's a one last question from Pedro. Actually, thanks for this nice presentation, UC. I'm really curious about the ability of the model to not overfit. Did you stop the learning after an epochs or some early stopping? Any thoughts on what generates this? Thank you so much.
Okay, so, we have. Yeah, so I used early stopping strategy to stop the training and then just kind of save the weights that gave the best validation score. And as for the ability not to overfit. Not completely sure, but we have this this model that is it's, so it's fully convolutional. And it uses these recurrent units, which use the same rules for every time step. So, in this way, we kind of respect two fundamental symmetries of the system. So we have the translation invariance in space and kind of the time invariance in the temporal domain. And so this way, hopefully, we force the network to learn something more physical. Than just just recognize patterns and maybe over recognize them. And then, you know, to further enforce symmetries, we use the data augmentation for rotation and flipping. So we get kind of parcel invariance to that as well.
Very nice. Well, thank you very much, UC, for being such a great competitor and for fantastic talk.
Thank you.
And with that, we come to our second place competitor, that is Sungbin Choi. He will give us a talk on unit-based future weather prediction on Weather Forecast 2021 Stage 2. Sungbin, I yield the floor to you.
I'm going to present my experiments using UNET on this weather forecast challenging. So, basically, the task is the same with the previous stage one challenge. Given one hour weather image, we need to predict next picture eight hour. And in the core task, we have two more regions added, so there are five regions to predict. And in extended transfer learning task, we have six regions in total. Basically, I took a similar approach that I did in stage one. I experimented with UNET and having dense net as a down sampling block. Regarding input, there were 25 picture variables. And among them, nine, there were nine continuous variables. They were simply normalized to range between zero and one. And regarding 16 discrete variables. Originally, at stage one, I just. I. Processed them as backpriced by one at encoding method. But, but in this stage two, I also tried to process it like normalized to range between zero and one. Just like the continuous variable. I'm in this part, I'm not sure about. It's this, what is each discrete variable means. So, I'm not sure which one is good for the performance. But when I compared a few runs with the pre-processing using backpricing or pre-processing just the normalization. There was no big difference between the two. So I used both pre-processing methods. Methods. In some model, I used the former. In some model, I used the latter. Because the latter one learns faster regarding the computation time. And in this stage two, I like stage one, I didn't use the recurrent model. So again, input picture, the time dimension is combined with the picture channel. There were four target variables. I will refer it as T1, T2, T3, and T4. And output has, there was eight hour, four timeframe for each hour. So thirty-two timeframe and multiplied by all target variable. So we need to predict 128 output values for each pixel. I trained UNET model using Adam optimizer. And loss function was a mean squared error scaled per its target variable. And those target rates designated by the competition organizer. So model, model structure is exactly same as the as my previous stage one participation. I used UNET and in the down sampling block, there are three convolutional layers densely connected with each other. Inspired from the dense net. Regarding the training model, we could train some region specific model for each target region. Or one general model combining all the trains from each region and so train one single model. As the same with the stage one, I chose to train one general model. Especially in stage two, there are more regions added to the challenge. So, training five, train one model instead of five is a very compute. More, it saves more computation time. And the other choice I made was. Regarding how about training model for each target variable. In stage one. Instead of predicting all variables at once from each model. I trained the model for each target variable separately. So there were basically four different models for each target variable. In this stage two, I changed it little bit. I trained two models. One model predicting T1, T2, T3 at once. And the other model predicts only T4. Actually, I, I'm until now, I'm quite not sure whether training model all better at once. Or a trivial training model for each variable separately, which one is better in terms of performance. But. Due to the computation time, I just combined those T1 through T3 in one model. So, I need to train one model instead of three. And the reason I trained T4 separately from the other was that. One reason is that the T4 target variable has only a binary output of zero or one. And when I looked the, looked the scores. Compared using a loss function, using mean squared error or binary cross entropy. Using minus cross entropy for the training loss was. Get me, looks like slightly better result compared to the mean scale of the error. So regarding T4 target variable four, I used the binary cross entropy loss function. So I had to train model separately against the other three target variables. So, I trained multiple base models. So regarding model for the T1, T2, T3, I trained three models. And for the target T4, I trained two models. And predictions from these baseline base models were simply averaged to produce final output. Official evaluation metric was mean squared error divided by the mean squared error of the baseline persistence method. Uh, official evaluation metric was mean squared error divided by the mean squared error of the baseline persistence method. And uh, since the general one general model uh trained from the all the the regions train set was used for the trained for the task. So exactly same model were used to make prediction for both task. So my best best score probably core task was zero point four eight. And the for the transfer learning task, it was zero point four three. Uh, this is the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, Sung Bin. Um, thank you very much. Could you tell me a little bit about the um uh compute situation? I mean, how much compute did it take? How much wall time? Just a rough estimate?
Okay, uh, I I utilize the two computer for this experimentation. And each computer has one CPU about twelve gigabytes in memory and uh uh, it took me about one or two days to train each base model from
Okay.
From my memory, yes.
Very nice. Very, very well done, Sung Sung Bin. Um, I have a question actually from Pedro. Thank you for a very nice presentation, Sung Bin. Actually, the extra variables of cloud type does not even have uh order, they are classes, types of clouds. Amazing that one hot works as well as normalizing to zero between zero and one of the interval. Um, did you try not using them at all to see if they indeed enhance the prediction score?
But
So did you run a model where you didn't use the um normalized one hot variables?
No, uh, I used one hot variable or the just normalizing it, but I cannot use both, so
Okay, no, no, but you didn't like leave it out just to see this is actually help or not.
Uh, I just no, no, not pre-processing, just using the low, low value?
Yes, I think so. I I believe that's the question, yeah.
I think I can unmute myself, so can you hear me? Is it possible?
Uh, yes, I can hear you.
Oh, cool. No, I was just asking uh if you tried your model without using these variables at all. So
What?
Without, so only only the dynamic variables that you have as target and not using the extra variables. Did you try this? In order to check if actually these variables enhance your performance?
Uh, I think there are in this challenge, there is dynamic data and static data. And I haven't used the static data at all. Those elevation or uh like elevation or the latitude longitude, those those uh, I haven't included them in my models. And all the other things are dynamic data.
Uh, yes, so from those, from the dynamic data, did you try only using the target variables as input and not the others?
Uh, the others, I I included all the others, not only target variable, but all the other dynamic data into as input in this model. But I haven't tried uh just using only the target variable as input.
Ah, okay, that was my question. Okay, thank you. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Fantastic. Well, again, thank you very much, Sung Bin, for a great talk and and for your great submission. Thank you very much.